Hello Ben.
Hello.
Hi.
So all this stuff, like we're supposed to back.
Yeah.
We're down to the second, so I'm gonna turn it off.
Okay. Oh, oh, okay.
You probably didn't add too much.
It's six twenty-nine by my clock.
Right up at the end, she's gonna ask if you guys are.
Why is it labeled East Hampton Enterprises?
Is that one of my documents?
No.
I've got six thirty, so when you're ready to go.
This conference will now be recorded.
Are we on?
You're good.
Good evening and welcome to the June second meeting of the Belchertown Board of Select. Board of Select Board. I'll stand and pledge allegiance to this. He's still over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm gonna go out of order and welcome John as our new select board member. It's really wonderful to have you onboard. Anybody else?
Yay!
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I don't think I got a round of applause.
I know. Because I got a round of applause. I also got real excited. Yay! And Steve is still here, yay! Alright, okay, now let's get down to business. Do we have any minutes to approve? Oh gosh. Uh, yes, the minutes of May nineteenth. We were all here except for John.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes of May nineteenth of twenty twenty-five.
Is there a second? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I stand over here.
Okay, um.
We'll sign these later.
There are no additions to the agenda, but we do have an appointment. I think we're gonna hear from the Opioid Settlement Fund Advisory Committee. Can you yell?
Sure.
Great.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Congratulations to those of you who are new and returning, or returning agents to the board. Most of you know me, I'm Gil Graham Rosa. I'm currently serving as the chairperson of what we call the Belchertown Opioid Settlement Funds Advisory Committee. That's our official name, this is the town committee. I think very wisely put together by the town with a variety of people and organizations represented. And just as a reminder, maybe new for John as well, our role is to think about the community needs around the opioid settlement funds. If you want more background, I'm happy to give that. But you all as the select board, so we come to you with recommendations for what we think are appropriate and beneficial ways to spend some of these settlement dollars that the town has. But you all have the ultimate authority as the select board to approve and/or allocate those dollars. So, committee's been around for almost a year and a half now, first started in January of twenty-four. So this is actually the second time we're coming to you with some recommendations for funding. We had two projects that we came to you for last year, we've got two this time around as well. I'm hoping you have a chance maybe to look at the chart that we put together. And I'll just take a look and see, yep, I think Sean Fortin is there, um, here with the school. So one of the proposals has to do with the school. So, thank you Sean for being with us, just in case any questions that you all might have that he might be better able to answer. So, maybe I can just jump right into what the two proposals are. One of which is a new application you have not seen or not been asked to weigh in on this particular project yet. The other one is a project similar to what we funded and you funded in the past with the schools. So the first one is Honest Beginnings, I don't know how many of you are familiar with Honest Beginnings. We are fortunate here in town, it is right here in Belchertown. It is one of dozens across the state of what are known as sober living homes. So, this is a facility and an agency, it's a nonprofit organization. It's run by folks who live right here in Belchertown, who are in recovery themselves. So this is a program ideally suited to, this one is for men, there are a number of them around the state for men. And then there are a number of them for women, but this one is an eleven-bed program here in town, designed primarily for someone who has gone through detox and they're coming out of some other kind of treatment. Maybe they have been hospitalized, maybe they have been in other situations where their housing was unstable. And they are now looking to enroll into a sober home with other, in this case, other men, all ages, all backgrounds, who are looking to continue with their treatment and recovery. And this program is certified by the state, there is an organization of sober homes around the area. So they're certified by the state as part of that network of programs. What we heard from them, so we invited Nick Southwick Hall and his mom, who helped develop and run the program, to come and talk with the committee. And what they said to us was, because this is a program where people are trying to almost relearn how to live in sobriety and in recovery, that part of that is also learning how to manage your finances, which maybe while you were in active substance use, you might have struggled with. And also as a show of commitment, these programs have an initial enrollment fee. It's almost, if you wanna think about it, it's almost like a first month deposit where you're gonna go and rent a place, 'cause this will be your living arrangement for as long as, as up to a year. So what we heard from Nick and some of the folks who are familiar and work in the program is that those fees can be a barrier, so particularly if you've just come out of treatment. Maybe folks have just come out of incarceration, maybe they haven't worked in a while. So there are some enrollment fees, as well as all of the residents of the home are asked to contribute to some of the expenses of the home, particularly around food and that enrollment fee. So what they came to us as a committee and said, it would be great if we could tap into opioid settlement funds and see if we can increase the likelihood that someone would be able to continue and stay in the program. That this enrollment fee, this initial sort of first month, month and a half fees that are involved would not be a barrier to them being enrolled. So, we said, you know, put a proposal together. From my perspective, they're asking for a relatively modest amount of money. If you think about it, they're an eleven-bed program, but you know, people are sometimes transitioning out as new people are transitioning in. So, they suggested that we look at supporting them for two new enrollees for a month, each month, for a year, and see how that goes. To then, you know, be able to say to, you know, to enrollees that we can help cover some of those initial enrollment fees and expenses. What we did also say to them, so they're asking for that total of twenty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars, which would again be for a twelve-month period. As a committee, we did say to them, you know, if you find that you have more turnover than you expected, or maybe after the first three or four months, if you all are supportive and approve this application, just keep us posted and let us know whether you might need to make any modifications. Because this will be the first time that we're coming to you all with a recommendation. Our committee did take a vote on it, the committee was unanimous in support of it. Just as in the side, Jill is, Jill Rossi is on the board of directors of Honest Beginnings, so she's very familiar with the program. Obviously, she abstained from the vote, but the committee itself was unanimous in wanting to support this, particularly because what we had previously supported, and the second proposal I'll talk about, was more prevention-oriented, this is really treatment and recovery-oriented. And that's obviously another whole area that the settlement dollars are designed to address. So let me stop there, that's a lot of information, see if you have questions or thoughts about that particular proposal before we talk about the school one.
Sure, so, open it up for discussion? Anybody have any questions or comments that'd like to make?
I just have a question, so is there somebody representing?
Um, let me look and see, I have to put my glasses on, I don't know if I see.
Sean?
Sean is with the schools, yeah.
That's better than that's what. Okay. Who are you looking for?
Pardon me?
Angela?
Angela Mancar, Angel Abad.
Hmm, I'm not sure. I mean, I'm certainly open to, you know, if any, if there is anybody on the call. I wasn't sure whether Nick was gonna be able to join us or not, but if there is anybody online who maybe has more knowledge of the program, I'm certainly open to that.
Well, what's, what's the question?
Um, I was just curious what the success rate of the program is since its inception.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good question. You know, as noted, you know, it's an eleven-bed facility, people are kind of transitioning in and out throughout that. I think Nick would say many of the folks who have been through the program continue to be in the area. They get, they make relationships in the area, I don't know, I could, I could get back in touch with them to see if there's, you know, a specific percentage success rate. But he feels like, especially since it's one of the few of these kinds of homes in the area, that it provides people a stable living arrangement. Many of the folks end up staying in this area, many of them are also connected to the recovery center that's in downtown Weir, and they find that actually settling in this area makes it easier for them to maintain their, their recovery. The other thing that you can do with a sober living situation is if, for example, you should have a setback or relapse back into your addiction and you start with treatment again, you are still eligible to then think about, do you want to try a sober living home, you know, another time? And one of the things that Nick was talking about with, again, making it easier for people to enroll and maybe take away some of those barriers at the start, that hopefully it also helps them stay in the sober home for a longer period of time. Most of the research shows that if you can stay with it for a while, your chances of success are higher, which sort of, you know, makes a lot of sense as you're making new relationships and taking advantage of what it has to offer.
Yeah. I'm glad that they came to vote to seek out those funds, so I think it's great.
Yeah, I agree, we encouraged them way back when, as we were even just doing our initial needs assessment. And again, because Jill is very familiar with the program, we encouraged them to come to us. We've even asked them, I'll say, you know, maybe if they are looking toward it down the road, we also even said to them, take a look at even your physical facility, which obviously it's expensive to maintain a physical facility and to maintain the certification that, you know, if at some point in the future you have costs in that kind of, the physical plant of your, of your home, the house there, certainly feel free to maybe come talk to the committee again. Those kinds of expenses are allowable under the state's guidance under how they use these dollars.
Can I just ask one more question and then a question?
Sure, please do.
So there was something like three hundred thousand, three hundred and forty-four thousand left after you allocate for both of these projects, assuming that we approve them tonight? Is there more money expected to come in, or are we at the end of this?
No, actually, in fact, there's definitely more, in fact thankfully Jill filled out for me. We can get it to you, I mean, just to remind all of us, I had to remind myself that there will be money that's coming in all the way up through twenty thirty-nine. So this is a multi-year process with all of the different lawsuits. And in fact, I think there are still lawsuits that have yet to be settled, so that there's potential for more money. So, the money does, isn't exactly the same year in and year out, but this, this is a long-term, the settlements go for, for quite a while, so the town will continue to be bringing in those dollars.
I think it's a great investment in the success of these individuals. They need to get back on their feet with no other method, especially, you know, you don't have access to funding, it's hard to get jobs.
Right. Exactly, and, and that's part of what the sober home, the, you know, the staff and their peers and recovery coaches who work with the men who are in the program are really trying to help them get all of that back in place, you know, find a job, you know, think about making sure you've got all the resources that you need for your best chance at recovery.
I have a question, I think it's a great program. Is there a process to make sure the funds are being used correctly for these places? So like, it's, if we give them money and it's not misused and it's going to the correct cause?
Yep, exactly. What we had said to Honest Beginnings was, particularly because this will be the first time that we're giving them, or if you approve it, that, you know, they'll be allocated these dollars, that what would happen is, in fact, the directors of that program would work with Jill so that they were getting like quarterly allotments rather than all of the money at one time. Because again, they never know how many new enrollees they might have. This was just their, their best estimate for a twelve-month period. So yes, we wanna take a look at, is it less than you expected, more than you expected? You know, what kinds of expenses do you have? So it's, it's great that we have Jill on our committee. And they will be doing sort of an invoicing process to be able to document how the money was spent and then the, the allocations made.
Thank you.
Yep.
No, no comments, it's great, thank you.
Thank you for bringing this to the select board, uh, do you want, are you looking for us to vote on this tonight?
Sure, that would be great. I know that, you know, they, they are ready, willing, and able to get started as soon as that approval and they can work out the, the mechanics of it all with Jill and the billing and all of that.
Okay, Nicole, I know you asked about the success rate, are you comfortable with?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, I was just curious, that was just more for my own curiosity.
Great, do I hear a motion?
Are we looking to do both of them at the same time, or do we?
Oh, no, I thought we were looking at these separately.
I think we should do them separately.
Um, sure, yeah, if you wanna take a, you could do a separate vote on this one
Yeah. Yeah.
And then we'll talk about the school proposal.
Okay.
Um, I move that we approve the application for twenty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars in opioid settlement funds to Honest Beginnings, Inc., to be used for sober living fees and access to supportive living for the program year running April twenty twenty-five through March twenty twenty-six.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you for your good work on this.
Oh, it's, uh, I'm grateful for the committee that we've had, we've just got great folks on the committee. And again, even the, the parts of the town and various agencies that the committee was created to have a seat for each of, you know, the various groups that are represented on it is a really good, it's a good cross-section, so the committee itself is very.
Well, it was done very thoughtfully, and that's what makes me feel confident about this. So again, thank you for your work on this.
Sure, no worries. So yeah, I know, like I said, Sean is with us, let me give you maybe a quick thumbnail about the second proposal, which if it does sound a bit familiar is because currently, in last year's, when we came to you all, you all approved some additional hours for staff under the Drug Free Communities Program, which is a prevention program, it's a nationwide program. Belchertown has had the grant from the federal government for five years. So it's a ten-year grant, you apply for the first five years, then you apply for the second five years. So where things are at now is that the schools, Sean and Chris Hoag and others involved with the program, based at the schools, that they applied just recently for the year six through ten grant. And that would, will, they'll find out about that in the somewhat near future. But as many of you may be aware, things at the federal level sometimes have been delayed. Some things may or may not even be funded, even though this particular program has been around for a long time. So they came to us and sort of requested, almost if it goes this way, this is how much money we will need to continue to do the opioid prevention work that you're already funding. If for some reason either the feds do not even allocate the grant, or they are not funded, they are requesting that the opioid settlement funds cover what the federal grant would have covered for the coming year, and then they will reapply for the federal grant a year from now. So, as the committee heard those requests, we are supportive of either or. So, the lesser amount of money will be if the federal grant comes through, and they'll hear about that in August, then as you see, they only need, you know, in that range of around thirty-five thousand dollars to cover extra staff time. If the federal grant does not come through, then they're looking to have that plus the extra staff time, which is how we arrive at that hundred and fifty-nine thousand plus number. We are hopeful that they will be funded by the federal grant, which would be great. And then, you know, the additional dollars that they're requesting to do more opioid work. But we also, the committee felt that to be sure that they don't have a gap in what they've been doing. So they've been at this for five years, built up a lot of activities, credibility, relationships. We did not want them to lose all of that and not have continuity in their prevention work. So we felt although, you know, in that scenario where they need that largest number, it's a fairly big investment, that it would be a worthwhile investment. Sean, I don't know if you wanna add anything to that, I hope I didn't steal too much thunder, but anything you wanna add?
I appreciate that, yeah, I just wanna be, I wanna clarify just some, just be specific with language. I work for the school department, this is a town proposal, vote is a town committee.
Thank you, yep, you're right.
As, as the fiscal agent. So it's really, you know, we, we do the, we take care of the payroll, but all the money comes straight from the federal government and it is town-wide, vote is a town committee, so it's not just the, the schools asking for the funds per se. And then we all, you know, this is a gap year, we did apply for the year six through ten on May second, so it's been a month. Most progress has happened because we have been updated to have a status of agency tracking number assigned. So, I mean, that's a, that's fine, but. There were a hundred, a hundred eligible drug-free community coalitions, eligible to apply for years six through ten. They are awarded fifty, I think our odds are pretty good. From what I can see, we have a phenomenal job of people in including, we were bidding coalition in year two, which is one of the best new coalitions in the country, three years ago. So I think we are on, on par to, to continue with year six through ten. But in the event of something or lack of funding, this gap year would get us through one year so that vote could continue to do the phenomenal work that they, they have been doing.
Thank you, Sean. Open for discussion, any questions?
Um, I have a question, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I remember earlier this year that a program for Javish Middle School was set up.
Yes.
Is that part of this funding, or is that separate?
In fact, that's a good reminder, thank you Whitney, that, that after-school program that we came to you all about last year that was funded, in fact, I'm gonna reach out to them, they need to put a final report together. They decided that they were not going to seek out any of the opioid settlement funds for this time around, so, um, this is, this is, this is separate from that.
This is separate, okay.
Yep.
Uh, as a sign of, I would love to see that annual report to see if it was successful.
Right. Exactly, exactly, yep.
Two questions.
Sean?
The annual salary, is that the same salary as previous year? For those two positions?
No. No, it is not, it is the salary that is listed in the year six through ten application. It does represent an increase as, as alignment with, it's not called market value, but the other folks in the area who have that position, so it does bring our two positions in line with other salaries that do similar work. So it is what we have applied for in the year six through ten, so it's reflective of that.
Um, so Sean, what is the percentage increase?
That I do not know off the top of my head, concerning.
And then my second question is, do any of these requested dollars go towards any expenses of enforcing or educating tobacco-free generation?
Well, that's an interesting question. My understanding is, when you apply for the Drug Free Communities Grant, correct me if I'm wrong, Sean, that you typically name the substances that you want to address, particularly because the Drug Free Communities is aimed at prevention primarily with people under the age of eighteen. That I, my understanding is, they are working around tobacco issues and nicotine issues and education and prevention around that. This, this, those dollars, the Board of Health is responsible for enforcing the nicotine-free generation, you know, their own regulation that they've done. My guess is they collaborate with vote and they collaborate with this drug-free group, but my understanding is, the responsibility for the enforcement of their regulation is gonna fall to the Board of Health.
Anyone else?
Seems pretty straightforward.
Excuse me?
It seems pretty straightforward.
Oh, yeah. It does, um, well, do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the application for a hundred and fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars in opioid settlement funds for the continuation of the Drug Free Communities Program, program year running October twenty twenty-five through September twenty twenty-six.
Is there a second? Uh, any further discussion?
Do we need to edit the motion regarding the funding that they're anticipating may come through? Or not necessarily?
Oh, I see what you mean.
Right.
Yeah, because if they get that grant.
Right, if they get the grant, the amount is less, right?
That's a great, that's a great point.
Do you want me to put?
Do we need to do that?
Is that how it was written in the application?
In some ways, yes, that, that, you know, they need the largest amount if they don't get the federal grant. If they do get the federal grant, then obviously maybe they need the lesser amount.
So it's up to.
So maybe, could be up to or contingent upon, you know, contingent upon whether the federal grant does or doesn't come through.
Yeah.
Which again, they'll know probably by August.
So we'd be adding that, that, that part to contingent upon.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I move that we approve the application for up to a hundred and fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars contingent upon approval of the federal grant in opioid settlement funds for the continuation of the Drug Free Communities Program, the program year running October twenty twenty-five through September twenty twenty-six.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'm gonna second, but now I have a procedural question, which is really dumb, because what, we did a motion and a second and we should've voted, but that was an amendment and she did it as another motion.
I hear you.
Oh.
I'm just like confused, 'cause we're.
So I'm assuming you withdrew your first motion?
Well, we didn't vote on it.
Right, but we, we motioned and we seconded.
No, we, we.
So motion.
I'm really sorry, I should've spoke up earlier.
Listen, motion to withdraw the previous motion and amend.
Why withdraw both of them?
Yeah.
Beautiful thing.
Erase it and start again, so.
Going back to twenty-eight thousand eight hundred?
No, 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 we did that one.
No.
That was good.
So.
Read it.
All we need to do is, I withdraw the, the, the last two motions.
I withdraw the last two motions.
And now?
Okay. I move that we approve the application for up to a hundred and fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars contingent upon approval of federal grants in opioid settlement funds for the continuation of the Drug Free Communities Program, the program year running October twenty twenty-five through September twenty twenty-six.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing done.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you, Nicole.
Sorry.
And thank you, Sean. Excellent work, vote the second one.
Thank you, Gil.
Our pleasure, I'm, obviously, as soon as the good news comes in, if they are funded, we'll let everybody know that.
Please do.
Through the, through vote and the schools. But I think this will also make it, you know, give people at least some assurance that everything will continue if that doesn't happen quite that way.
Now, this is very well thought out, thank you, and thank you, Sean. Okay. Uh, moving on. Moving on, okay, the, now we're in.
Can I make a request?
Yes.
'Cause we have two other folks in the audience related to some of this.
Yes. Oh.
I don't know who that other gentleman is, if he's related to one of these things.
Are you related to one of the, one of the?
Me?
Yes.
No.
You're just listening?
Me?
Yes.
Can I?
Yes, absolutely.
I just, I'm angry with myself for not coming here prior, and I'll be coming to this board and to the school committee board
Okay.
to watch and see how our elected officials are monitoring the fiscal responsibility in this town.
Great.
Excellent.
And I'm angry with myself for not doing it sooner.
Sign in. Would you sign in on that piece of paperwork then?
Yeah. Thank you.
So, I'm just wondering if we can move up one of those discussion items, so that one of these two lovely individuals can be released from being here this evening.
And Joanne's chair for five, B and five, Beth.
Okay.
I can eat probably for Sarah.
Five E, please, yes.
It's up to you. What are you, and which one are you here for?
I'm here for five E.
Five E. Five E. So, why don't we, yeah, can we move to E, request update charge for creative economy committee? Come on up.
Hello? Hi, I'll sign in right when I go out, I'll let you do that. So, hello, my name is Sarah Maroney, I know most of you, for those who I have not met, congratulations, Mr. Ritter. Nicole, we've seen each other on things, but not officially in this setting. So, I am our chair of the creative economy committee and volunteer at large within Belchertown for the past six years. So, tonight I am here, we had updated our committee charge back in February, and then said we need to bring it before the board to then get the final approval, to update it on the website. You have the redline copy, you'll notice it's a lot of redlines, and then we have the original copy without any red on it. So, the reason we updated the charge, the original creative economy committee charge was created during the creation of the committee, before members actually came on board to the committee and started completing the work and started holding meetings. We thought that it would be appropriate within the first few meetings, and other members, all of the members agreed to look at our charge and ensure that it met the priorities of all of the members on the committee. And really just kind of redefine it, make sure we're clear in what the creative economy is doing, 'cause we knew that there were some questions coming in, and a lot of people were saying, okay, well, what is the creative economy committee doing? And we wanted to really make sure the charge spelled that out. So, really what you see in a lot of the changes is going through and taking what was in the original charge and clarifying it and breaking it down, so we have actual responsibilities listed out. We also have the committee governance spelled out, the membership criteria, that one didn't get modified too much. And then we wanted to add performance and evaluation metrics at the bottom. And I can, I'm doing a very brief explanation, and then I'll, I'll go through and kind of, wherever you'd like further explanation, I can, I can go through that. The process that we did to go and update the committee charge, what happened over the course of three meetings. So, with the first meeting, it was discussed, okay, we would like to look at the charge and we would like to update it. We said, okay, we had, one member was designated to make just an outline. So, okay, what is a structure that we can look at to make this, how it make more sense and look more streamlined? That outline was brought to the next meeting, and the majority of that meeting was spent with all of the committee members having open discussion. We also had a couple of our town officials in the room as well, being able to take part in that discussion. And we went through line by line, and redline made notes, and painstakingly said, okay, is this where we want and is this what's representing our committee? Brought the draft to the next meeting, and the committee as a whole was able to vote on it and approve. It passed with unanimous vote to move forward with this. This is something that we wanna practice at least annually, really having that check-in with the committee to make sure that it's meeting these priorities that we're setting and doing our annual goal updates. It won't be as extensive as this annually, this was our first one, and it took a couple hours to really get through, but it was a great learning process, 'cause it also helped us understand what we were doing. So, that is the process, and that is the brief explanation of why we changed it, and really kind of what we did to change it.
Well, all right, does anyone have any comments, questions?
I was at that meeting, I remember.
I, it was, we went through line by line, yes, it was very early on.
I just noticed two grammatical things that I can tell you at any time, just in case you're planning to, if this is the one that you're gonna, you know, publish.
Yes.
One of them was, I think, didn't we rename we, I don't know who, State School Building and Grounds is now just Building and Grounds, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you, and I think that was a question while making this, because it was in that process, thank you, I will change that.
Yeah. And then the only other thing was under number five, marketing and outreach. Something happened like right here, I don't, on that last line, it's almost like it's missing a part of the sentence.
It is, yeah.
Is it in the clean version?
It just says creative economy committee governance structure, and then doesn't say anything else.
Oh, that looks like that was a line that went on the other one, so I can go through and justify.
That's all I have.
Okay.
I have, I have a question, so from the original to this, what did the committee learn?
So, we really learned, what really started this too, was the discussion about, this committee was formed really in the thought of the cultural district and part of that application, and to be kind of the management of the eventual cultural district in town and help really foster the growth of that. And that keeps getting pushed out for the state, so we know it will happen, but it's just understanding the timeline. We're not able to control the timeline for that. So, that's really what sparked this, okay, well, what are we if not that? So, it really got us thinking to deep dive, and what we really learned is that the creative economy committee can be the connector of all of our committees essentially, that deal with creative economic development in town. So, we're working really closely with the historic commission, the agricultural groups, the artistic groups, cultural council. And rather than, so initially, we've been really front-running a lot of our projects right off the bat, because they were projects that Maude was working on during the tenure, it was really under that. And we will still, as a committee, continue to support art moving forward and cultural projects. But we also noticed that, really, there needs to be someone looking at, okay, how do we help our creative economy? How do we really look at the metrics of it too? So, that was a big learning piece, and we also learned how many branches in town we already have between arts and culture, between recreation is even a creative economy piece, so our ag, tourism. One of the neat things that came out of this eventually is one of the one-stop apps that's getting put in this year is a, really, it's starting small as a downtown business marketing plan, but we're gonna use that to then expand that thought and kind of help be one of those economic drivers with a sector of our town that has grown over the years, but doesn't really have that really connecting piece to it. So, that was really one of the neat pieces that we learned, is we have, 'cause on the committee, we have members who are former business owners in town. We have artists on the board who have, who are artists in town selling their wares. One just had a festival this weekend, which I didn't get to go to, and I'm so sad, 'cause I heard the art was amazing. We have historians, we have agriculturally connected individuals, so it's a unique blend, town officials. So, it's just a unique blend, and we really learned the power that can come out of this committee of helping bring all of this together and finding the connections with it. Yeah.
That's excellent, that's great, thank you. So, we are missing a line, is that right? Down here?
For?
Creative economy committee governance structure under marketing, and I would.
That was, I'm going to, I'm going to check, and I can, I'm going to check that, because that looks like it was the, the start of the committee governance right there, 'cause committee governance is right under there.
Okay.
Oh, so, are you saying it just should be stricken?
It's just gonna be stricken, yeah.
Uh, okay. Okay, so we can.
Make that change.
Yeah, we can have that changed, you know, we can still vote on it.
Yes. Yeah.
Would that change? Anyone have anything else you wanna add?
I don't wanna add more to it. One of the things that Steve and I talked about, because we have our cultural district manager, who right now is under our creative economy coordinator, whose term is expiring at the end of June. And I think what we agreed was that she would probably best report to the creative economy committee. I just wanna make sure that we're all in agreement about that before it actually ends up happening.
Do we have examples of employees that report to committees?
That's what I was just wondering too.
She's not an employee, she's a contracted service.
Yeah, she's a brand manager.
Okay.
So.
So, we do have examples of that, right, you want?
It's still, but it's a contract position.
Yeah.
So.
Well, it's a contracted service, like the branding committee that oversees the consultant doing the branding work, so in that, in that sense, it would.
Okay. So, we've done this, that's right, okay.
Yes. Yep. You know, I would hope that in the future
Yeah.
we can find a way to either merge some of our economic planning in with the planning department, or hire somebody to do economic planning.
Mm-hmm.
And then that would be a different case, we wouldn't want that person working for a committee, they would make answer to the town administrator or manager and work in conjunction with, you know, the creative economy committee, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, so.
So, you guys are cool with directing her activity?
Yeah, and we can put, I'm sending in our agenda for next week's meeting tomorrow, so I'll make sure that it's on there for the committee to discuss as a whole. And if it helps part of Maude's transition out, will be, I'll be setting up meetings with Maude, Doug, if Jen is still the liaison, or if someone is the liaison, Steve, so we'll be setting up some meetings. And then, starting in July, so Maude would regularly meet with Doug and regularly meet with Lisa. So, as the current chair, I'll be setting up meetings to have, making sure I'm regularly meeting with our town liaison, ensuring that our priorities are staying in line, and having those meetings with Lisa as well. Yeah. And then whomever is that chair, that structure will be up, so as that molds with that, whomever is in that chair seat will have a structure in place to keep that going, since it is kind of a, not unique, but it is, it has those different layers.
Yeah, and the creative economy coordinator has a set dollar value with that contract, and we have to make sure that the scope of work that's approved by the committee fits within that, that dollar value, so that we can get what we're asking for.
Okay, good. The, does, would that need to be a part of this in writing?
I don't believe so.
Would be, it would be a separate, we need to have it in writing somewhere, because the language that you're talking about as well, you know, because we don't have someone, but if we hire someone, you know? So, just so that we have that memorialized, or no?
'Cause right now, she's under contract through the end of the year.
June.
No, the end of the year. Not Maude, the cultural district manager's contract goes through December twenty twenty-five.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, alright. Okay.
Right.
So, we don't, so this is a moot point for right now?
Yeah, and then it would be renewed if, right, I'm assuming, or extended or amended or what have you, through the committee.
Yeah, I'm just suggesting at some point, we should have it in writing, this is.
Yeah, there's a contract that she signed with the town, I mean, she couldn't be working if we didn't have a signed contract.
Okay. Alright.
Yeah, so we have, we have something written with her.
Yes.
Under the legislation that created the town manager, all employees, unless specifically excluded, work technically for my office.
Okay.
So, I think if, if we do bring somebody in as an employee, then it automatically changes that.
Yeah. Alright, so you're comfortable with it?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, do I hear a motion?
So, I. I make a motion that we revise the Belchertown Creative Economy Committee charge as presented this evening.
Second.
Further discussion?
With the changes?
Yes.
As print sent it tonight, and we said we were making the changes.
I just wanna make sure you put that, like, with the changes, that made.
Yes.
Uh, no more discussion here?
I just wanna say, this is so helpful, the clarifying, I feel like I can now also talk to people more about what the creative economy is, and I don't know if you approve of me putting this on you, but I feel like you've created an in-house consulting group, which is really fantastic and so innovative, so thank you.
What I find interesting is, often when charges are first done after a year or two, the committee, once they really see what the work is, will often come back and say, well, actually, it's really this. That's why I asked the question about, what have you learned?
Yeah.
And this is incredibly well thought out, and gives very, a very clear delineation of what it is that you're doing and not doing. And what I really like about it is that you're gonna check in on an annual basis, not as thorough as this, to make sure that you're doing what you said you're gonna do and stay on track. So, kudos to you and to the committee.
We still need to vote.
Do you think we still need to vote? Yeah, I just wanted to, we're, we're still on, we're still on discussion.
Just making sure, I'm just making sure.
That's totally fine.
I could say that, alright.
Totally fine.
So, are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
Uh, I?
I.
I.
I'm gonna call it five zero zero.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Give it to the rest of the committee, yeah.
Um, one question, sending the clean, who should I send, to Melissa or to Pamela, the clean line, fully, okay?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Beth, and. Okay. Alright, so I guess we can go with, we can talk about the assistant?
You want to sit there?
Yep, that way we can.
She said, he said she's here for B two.
For who?
B two.
B two? Oh, the COO.
In addition to F, also B.
Okay. You know what, I'm just gonna go in order, can we just do that, Jen?
We can go in order.
Let's go in order.
We can do whatever you want, you're the, you're the acting chair.
That's right.
Do you wanna ratify that?
Well, interestingly enough.
That's the first thing on the agenda.
First thing on the agenda is your reorg of the select board. So, every year, as people step on and off, we do a reorg of the select board. The, the three roles are chair, vice chair, and clerk. Is there anything else that I need to say?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
You got it, so we need to select the chair, once that's done, we will, we will select the vice chair and then the clerk, so.
Okay. Alright.
We need a nomination, a second, and a vote on each.
Okay.
Yes, I'm new to the select board, so can you just describe them for their residents and everything, you know, like what the chair does, the vice chair and the clerk does, just real quick.
That's such a good question, actually.
Sorry.
Yeah, Steve, go ahead.
So, the, the main functions of the chair are to set the com, uh, excuse me, set the agenda, which I usually prepare and then consult with the chair prior to the meeting to make sure everything that is on there is appropriate and agreed to, and then to conduct the meeting. So, those are the main things. Chair's also generally the first line of communications, if there's an issue that needs to go in front of the board, whether it's an emergency or just routine business, those things usually occur a couple times a week. The vice chair's role is to just fill in for the chair, I don't believe the vice chair has any other responsibilities than, than that. The clerk manages all the hearing notices, the to-be-signed folder, handles the paperwork. Clerk does not take minutes, we do that, the staff will review the meeting recordings and then prepare minutes. The clerk will present those minutes to the board for approval.
Thank you.
So, that's about as simple as I can get it.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay, so nominations are open.
I move that we nominate Lisa Lefard Pearson as chair of the Belchertown Select Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you accept?
I accept.
I accept. I'm going to the vote.
Um, oh yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, thank you, thank you.
You vote for yourself?
Aye.
Five zero zero.
There we go, five zero. Um, okay, do we have any other nominations?
I move that we nominate Jennifer Turner as vice chair of the Belchertown Select Board.
Second? Hello?
You really want me to do this?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you accept?
Kind of abstain from the vote, but. I'll accept it if you voted for it.
Okay, great, aye, yes.
But you have to call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
You call for the vote.
All in favor of Jen?
Aye.
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 There we go.
Then you have to call for abstentions, and I will abstain from the vote.
Any abstentions? Okay.
There you go.
Four.
It's all that procedural stuff.
Or one. Um, okay, for clerk, I nominate. Um, okay, um, for clerk, I nominate, uh, Nicole Miner.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any abstentions?
Abstain.
You abstain?
Don't I have to?
You don't have to, you could vote for yourself.
No.
No.
You can vote for yourself.
I.
Alright.
That's a, that's a you decision.
Uh, okay, so that's a five zero.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, great. Um.
We are not doing liaisonships this evening, correct?
No, we're, we're, we're not doing this, uh, tonight, we're, um, we are gonna talk about a code of conduct, but, um, uh, I just wanna say thank you.
No.
Um, I will strive to be, um, a fair chair, listen to everyone, and, um, I may not always have the procedural rights.
Okay.
But my heart is in the right place, uh, you know, I, I did this because I care about Belcher Town, and I know that's why we're all here. And, uh, in that spirit, regardless if I do it perfectly, it will always be with the residents of Belcher Town first and foremost in mind. Um, congratulations, congratulations. Uh, okay. Uh, code of conduct intro and discussion, Steve, you wanna tee this up?
Sure, so this is a continuation of a project that I think we started nearly a year ago.
Mm-hmm.
We failed it for a little while, um, due to other priorities. And bringing it back up tonight just to refresh everybody where we are, um, this is only intended to be an initial discussion, um, just a little bit of background information, there's a lot of material there to digest. Um, a lot of different angles that we can look at this from, um, and I wanna point out that Joanne's here from her HR department, I'm pretty sure everybody has met Joanne, uh, she worked on these in the beginning, uh, a year ago. Um, there's three documents in front of you tonight, one is a draft of a code of conduct for employees, the second is a sample that we obtained from Sudbury, and that was the basis for the third document, which is the code of conduct for elected and appointed officials, um, to committees, uh, and select board included. There are some differences in those two documents, um, the two drafts were reviewed by council previously and recommendations were added to them, so they have been vetted at least once. So anything going forward that can change, we'll have to send back just for final vetting, but I think, um, these documents are certainly a good foundation for the final documents that we're going to have. By no means are they what we expect to be the final product, this is just to get the conversation started, and it may take several meetings to get through, it's just a lot to to really think through and go over.
Mm-hmm.
So, I didn't really, I, I'm not really gonna get into the the weeds on how these go, but, um, if you have had a chance to look at them, if you have comments already, or if you have questions for Joanne, or I, you're more than welcome to to ask.
Can we pack up for a minute?
Mm-hmm.
How did this all come about? Where, at what point was and by whom was it decided that a code of conduct for elected officials and communities was in order?
I was.
So I believe, um, one of the select board members, or maybe two of the select board members attended a training at MMA, and that's where that idea came from.
Trans.
That's also where the, I believe, um, I don't know if it was a Sudbury model, but we did receive some models that were presented at that MMA training.
Yes, I actually got it started a phone call to you, I know. Select board.
And that's what started the conversation with the prior chair, who agreed that we could put this in front of the board for consideration.
I will admit, I think it may have been me, I think it was, yeah, I think it was me, I think it was fresh off of an MMA training as a new select board member, and a few towns have had great success with it. And we were having some difficulties with the social media, so I remember thinking, oh, this could be interesting, and I brought it forward, but we turned it for a year.
Um, was the Sudbury one the one I submitted?
I think so, yeah, 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 and that was the one we ended up using for the basis of the draft.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Yep, yeah, that's why they're both in there.
Uh. The, uh, so if I understand this correctly, the town of Sudbury one, uh, the second one is based on the town of Sudbury with additional language put in?
Yeah, there was some additional language, um, which is in my notes.
Mm-hmm.
But it, I see the te, the town of Sudbury.
Mm-hmm.
The next document, is that based on ta, on the Sudbury one?
Yes.
So.
And so you added additional language, or not you, um, who, who, who added it?
Council?
That was council.
Council, interesting.
Just to clarify a few things with, um, chain of command, um, and probably most importantly, the, um, investigation process, which was missing from the Sudbury one, which is in the Belcher Town one, so if there is accusations of misconduct, there's a, um, means for investigation.
So, anybody, this is open discussion, this is, we're not making decisions tonight, but if, um, if people have questions, this is a good time to ask.
Sure.
I'm new to it, so I have a question, cause I was reading over, and this is elected officials, is it all elected officials, like school committee, town clerk, some?
No, the school department would be excluded, they have their own policies and they are governed under their own set of rules for, um, at the, at the state level, master general law, yeah.
Clerk?
It would, it would apply to the clerk as an elected official.
Um, I think the MMA training that you attended is probably still available to watch, so maybe what we could do is like,
Yeah.
spend some time, it's probably an hour, and we could all like watch it and like see what is discussed, um, at the MMA level, to like really wrap our heads around, you know, why a code of conduct is necessary and, um, how it's useful, and then maybe pick up more of this conversation.
Mm-hmm.
I guess I don't understand why a code of conduct, let me rephrase that. I don't understand how, where does the buck stop on a code of conduct for elected officials? We report, my, my boss are the voters of this town, the citizens, so if I'm acting inappropriately, they're going to, I will be punished by not getting reelected. Basically, I know that doesn't sound great, but you know what I'm trying to get at, so, you know, if, if we had a code of conduct, and let's say I was acting inappropriately, what's the ramification? I mean, what happens?
Mm-hmm.
That's a great question, I don't have an answer.
I'm just, I'm not in love, I gotta say, I'm not feeling a lot of love for a code of conduct on elected officials, just because I just don't see where the oversight is. I mean, I think, you know, we all volunteer our time, we do this because this is what we love to do, I'd never come in this room with, ever with any intentions of acting inappropriately, yelling, fighting, any of that.
Right.
Um, but we all also need to be given a little bit of, you know, uh, extra room to be a little bit emotional like this, because we care so much, right? So, I, I just don't understand, who's managing this?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I don't think the, um, code of conduct, you call for the removal of the select board member or the town, but there's a recall process for that, yes, um.
Or can't.
Right.
So I think certain parts of this apply more to committee members, elected committee members than elected officials, and maybe it, maybe we just need some clarification again. Or we can take the elected officials right out of it and just fall back on it, and this is just food for thought, we're making, not, not making decisions tonight.
Right.
I think you bring up, I mean, I think you bring up an excellent point, uh, the, the code of conduct, in my mind, is, uh, is to get a, a framework in our head for how we conduct ourselves, um, with respect to the town manager, with respect to each other, and, uh, with respect to committees in town. Um, I, I see it as, uh, 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 more as a, a pledge, this is what I pledge to do, how I pledge to be on the board, um, that's how I see it.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, we can all get along today, but like what, sorry. What happens if, you know, things happen? I mean, I've, I've lived through this, so, um, and there's been no like guidance, or like, who do you go to? And how do you deal with kinds of, um, documentation?
Right, understood, but there can't be any ramification for it.
Yes, but there could, I, yes, and, right, like, how?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know how to say these things.
Well, I mean, I, I see elected officials being sanctioned at all levels of the government, maybe there's a process that people are stripped from their liaisonship, so, or, you know, I, I don't know, um.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
But I do think there is something to having a document that, uh, that is about being our best selves in this, in this position.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, whether or not we agree, and Lord knows, I mean, this past year, you know, there's, there, there have been some, there's been some times where it's been difficult. And I'm really proud of this board, I'm really proud of, of how we have conducted ourselves, but, uh, to, to Jen's point, um, you know, without getting into history, uh, there's history when that's not always the case. And, um, so putting something forward that asks us to do our job with integrity, uh, and understanding what that looks like in a written document, uh, that would be then passed on, regardless of who sits in these seats, that the expectation is that this is how we will conduct ourselves, is worth talking about.
So I think I was more amenable to the town of Sudbury's version of this, I think it was, um, not as restrictive.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, I mean, I'm certainly open to it, I just, I just, I hate to see us put something together where there's no legal recourse behind it. It's like, why are we wasting our time doing this when we could be doing other things?
Well, to your point, there are, there are repercussions, and we know what they are, uh, the voters will vote us in, the voters will vote us out.
Right, yes.
Um, there, you know, there, that, that is what will happen, regardless of if we have this document.
Correct.
So, this is, uh, I, I, I'm asking us to, to think about this more as our code, it's our code of conduct.
Yeah, it's like.
How we want to conduct ourselves.
Like group norms.
Yes.
That get established.
When the boards come together.
Right.
So, um.
But we don't have to make, oh, did you have something?
Well, if I may inject, um, I think Jen made a great suggestion about going back and watching the MMA, uh, seminar, just to see what this is about. The other thing is, there's probably a few topics that we could have our labor council come in, who helped us with this document and present to the board, and maybe kick some of this around directly, so we can avoid, um, go back and forth. Uh, I'd be happy to set up the time for him to come in, um, because I think there's a few other things that we should probably talk about as well, um, going forward.
Well, I think for right now, though, to the purpose tonight, if I may, is, uh, was to have us take a look at this and think about it on, on our own and come back. Um, I think it's a great idea, um, we can't watch it together, but, uh, uh, um, uh, maybe, I don't know, did, will you go?
Yeah, I need to go back, because if, if memory serves, this is from the new board member training.
Yes.
Which I know they gave us PowerPoints, I'm not sure if there's a recording, but I'm, I'm sure I did my slides.
Did you?
Took it.
Okay.
I haven't watched it, so if you send it to me, I would, love it.
Okay.
Well, look in the video library, MMA, it's the video library.
Okay.
It would have been from just about one, one year ago.
Well, I have a question, Steve, can you find that?
We can take it up.
Okay, and then just send it to everyone, so we can watch it on our own, come back with, uh, with questions and next steps, and, um.
Yeah. Yep, and I'll be happy to set up a council to come in and we can, you know, go, if, if needed, if.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's start with this.
Mm-hmm.
Any, anything else?
Yeah, I do, so on the, so I did find a lot of grammatical things, I don't know if you want me to just share those with you directly?
Yeah, I don't think we need to go do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I, I do wanna make a recommendation, um.
On what?
On the employee code of conduct.
Okay.
Um, I would like to see, um, in addition to it, that all employees, um, including town manager, uh, refrain from using town time, resources, um, or platforms that discuss personal views, um, in non-factual information on any topic that's gonna come before the voters in a ballot or annual town meeting.
During town time.
Per, person, you talking personal, social media?
No, um, I'm specifically talking about what happened about a month ago on the town website. I'm not sure how you all feel about it, but I feel pretty strongly that that should be included in the code of conduct.
There may be some, something in our social media policy that addresses that, we could look at that as well.
Mm-hmm.
But our social media policy was already in place, so are you saying that what happened last month was in violation of the social media policy?
No, it's, it wasn't.
What did you say, Steve?
It was not, no.
Oh, okay. Um.
But I, I think we should, need to look at the social media policy to shore that up, I don't think that necessarily would go in the employee code of conduct. I suppose it could go in both.
Well, this is on the town website.
It, it, it sounds like it would, it would go in, I mean, I, I'm not saying one way or another, but if we're talking about employee code of conduct, if, if we were gonna include it, it, that feels like the place it would be.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can look at it a little bit further, see where, maybe it belongs in both.
Maybe.
Do we consider town website social media?
No, I, I, I'd have to read the policy, I can't answer that.
Okay, but again, this is more food for thought. Um, can we, uh, just think about it?
Yeah.
And, um, when we all feel like we're ready to come forward, does, we can, I'll talk to Steve about putting it back on the agenda, and we'll look at next steps.
Yeah. Perfect. Mm-hmm.
Okay? Okay. Um, endorse do, dog warrant, Steve, you wanna talk about this?
Yeah, this is an annual endorsement. Um, every year, the board needs to vote on the annual dog warrant to authorize the town's animal control officer, um, and his or her assistants to conduct the official actions as defined, uh, in the attached warrant, which is on page twenty five.
Mm-hmm.
This is required under Master General Law Chapter one forty and further defined in Section one thirty seven. So this is an annual vote, we do this every year. And we get over to page twenty five, see if there's anything on there that.
Can I ask a question on this?
Sure.
Um, I remember I, I read this last year, um, and it ca, it came up that Belcher Town has a no kill policy.
That is correct.
But yet we still have the language for, for kill in there.
That is correct.
Are we, are we not permitted to strike that language from the warrant?
That is correct, cause it's Master General Law, yeah, so it's a, our policy is no kill, and I believe they still have a, a hundred percent success rate on that.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Mm, that's great.
Yeah.
Okay, um, do I hear a motion?
Do we have to read this?
The whole thing?
I, I can read it, um, but do we do the motion before we read it, or do we just read it?
Mm-hmm.
Could you just say accepted?
Does it have to be the whole thing?
I remember I read it last year and I moved it.
Okay, you, you have to read the whole thing, alright.
I remember reading, I don't, not saying I wanna read that, I'm saying I remember reading it.
No, please do.
I.
Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a motion?
If you can just endorse the dog warrant.
Um, I move that we endorse the annual dog warrant, um, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. You are hereby required to proceed forthwith to seek out, catch, and confine all dogs within said town not duly licensed, collared, or harnessed and tagged according to the provisions of Chapter one forty of the general laws. And you're further required to make and enter complaint against the owner or keeper of every such dog, and to kill or cause to be killed by methods of execution other than gunshot except in case of emergency. T sixty-one, so-called an euthanasia solution, not under the control of the Federal Drug Enforcement Administration unless by a veterinarian.
Best effort.
Saccharicoline, choline, any drugs that have a cureiform-like action, electrocution, or any method which causes an unnecessarily cruel death each dog which, after detained for a period of ten days, shall not then have been duly licensed, collared, or harnessed and tagged, except that any male or any spayed female dog not found to be diseased may be made available for adoption for not less than three dollars, and you shall keep an account of any such adoption and forthwith pay over the money to the town treasurer. Before delivery of any dog so adopted, you shall require to per, yeah, you should be required, the purchaser, to show identification and to register and procure a license and tag for such dog from the town clerk of the town where the dog is to be kept in accordance with the provisions of Section one thirty-seven of said Chapter one forty of general laws. Hear of, fail not, and make due return of this warrant with your doings therein, on or before the first day of October next, on or before the first day of January next, and on or before the first day of April next, and at the expiration of your term of office, stating the number of dogs caught, confined, and/or killed or adopted in the name of the owners or keepers thereof, and whether all unlicensed dogs in said town have been caught, confined, and/or killed or adopted in the names of persons against whom complaints have been made under the provisions of said Chapter one forty, and whether complaints have been made and entered against all persons who have failed to comply with the provisions of said Chapter one forty, given under my hand and seal at Belcher Town, efforts said, second day of June in the year twenty twenty-five.
Second?
All in favor?
Uh,
One correction, uh, my name, it should, it just says John, shouldn't it be Jonathan if I'm legally signing it? It's not that good.
How, how did you fill out your, um, election?
Jonathan.
Jonathan.
This is just short, make it easy for the thing.
I mean, that's the reason my middle name's included, I think, 'cause that's how I filled out.
I just wanna make sure.
You gotta read the whole thing again, Nicole.
Um, we'll, we'll, we'll get a corrected copy, we'll also take the, uh, the D F required, and, um, we'll have it in here.
I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, we'll have it available for everybody to stop in and sign. We're gonna have additional documents for you to sign anyways.
Okay. All right, so, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, hearing none? Uh, the motion passes five zero. Um, thank you, and thank you for reading. Um, okay, Dee, request to close June twentieth, twenty twenty-five, the day before Juneteenth.
So this is a, a standard request that comes in when we have holidays that either fall on a Thursday or a Tuesday. We generally try to allow the employees to have a longer weekend, a four-day weekend. Um, it means the offices would be closed to the public, not all employees have to take the day off, it's not mandatory. If they do take the day off, they have to use their time, whether it be personal, a vacation, or, um, a floating holiday, for example. Um, and this allows people to have a little extra time, makes for a better holiday if people wanna travel, and it's, uh, customarily has not been a problem, um, so we always ask for the board's permission to close the town hall. And again, there will be probably people answering some of the phones, um, and certainly this only applies to non-emergency in public safety offices, and so the police station will still be staffed, and the fire department, and our wastewater treatment plant that operates, seven days will be twenty-four hours a day, it will still be functioning, and we'll have all those services in place.
And it also gives people who decide they wanna work that day a chance to have a quiet office and
It's hard.
just get the work done.
Mm-hmm.
So you said if they take it off, they have to take time for it?
Yeah, it's not a free holiday, right?
Oh, okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I move that town offices be closed on Friday, June twentieth, twenty twenty-five, to allow interested and eligible staff the opportunity to enjoy an extended holiday weekend.
I hear a second. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, five zero.
We're up to five F, because we had a good five E, and just to remind the board, we have no, no, no reason to take action on G. That's, we can skip down.
Okay, great. All right, so, uh, administrative secretary to the town manager and the select board vacancy.
Yeah, so as the board's aware, we have a vacancy coming up in the Fannerty House. The administrative secretary has, uh, submitted a, uh, letter of resignation. The twenty-seventh of June is the last day. Um, we wanna work towards getting this position filled as soon as possible, and we wanna know if the board has any expectations about how the position is, if you have any questions on what the position does, um, and what, if anything, you'd wanna see added to that, that, um, job description, and Joanne and I can see if we can make it fit.
Okay. So, uh, we can open this for discussion?
So, hi, Jen.
Hello.
Um, so I was curious, um, because I know when we had a shift a couple of years ago in that office from longstanding employees in that office, I had, um, pushed to look at both of the jobs in a comprehensive manner, um, to see if it was still in alignment with the needs of the community and all of those component pieces, um, whether, you know, things could be added, or, um, subtracted, or if we could shift responsibilities, um, and things like that. So I know you and I had extensive conversations a couple of years ago about this. So I'm curious if, I am, and I did, um, hear that this job descrip, and I see that it's been updated to, to now, but like, did it, was it looked at comprehensively, like, with the whole office in mind, with both positions?
Yes, um, S- Steve and I had multiple conversations about the position, um, talking about different ways we could enhance it, um, modernize it, bring it up to speed, um, and one of the things that we had, I had pointed out to him was that your, your interest back then was to include the communications piece, which we have our own standalone communications manager position, so, um, and we've seen how much work that position does, and felt that we couldn't roll that into this position, um, and felt that we needed to keep it separate. Uh, we did have, um, a zoning board of appeals secretary position that became a ba- vacant through, um, an individual who had the, the role for decades, uh, on, as a part-time basis. Um, we were struggling with how to fill that, and so we rolled that into this, this position. Um, and also anticipate there to be more, um, automation, more, um, technology use, DocuSign, uh, um, AI, and things like that incorporated into the position. So, so yes, we did, I did have that in the back of my head, and we, we had our discussions.
Have you looked at, uh, how other towns support staff, what their job descriptions are? Or are we basing this on historical, the historical roles of, of the two positions?
Um, I guess I was basi, we based it mostly on the current needs.
Okay.
Of the,
See, what I'm interested in is understanding,
Board, Steve needs, and the board needs.
Well, it was, okay, it is Steve, but it's also select board.
Yep.
And, um, this, I, I, I believe we have an opportunity right now to take a look at, uh, how other, um, town manager offices operate, and what the work is of the, of the people who, uh, who are in those positions. Um, it, it, I, I'm in agreement with Jen that, um, we, the function of communications, at least in my career, has always been in the executive office. And, uh, because they're communicating out what's going on in the town, they need to be closest to, uh, the person who's, uh, who's running the town. Um, and, uh, a- and I also, and I'm not feeling that we have taken the time to really look at what our needs are as a select board. And, uh, and, and what the expectation we should have. I, I'm not even sure what it is, because it's not, it, it's not clear to me what, um, what they're doing specifically, other than putting this together, which is phenomenal, I appreciate it, and, uh, and also doing the minutes, phenomenal, I appreciate it. Um, but understanding what other kinds of things do, uh, do other towns offer to support, um, specifically the select board. Um, so I feel like this is an opportunity to at least take a step back, and, uh, and look at what other towns are doing, um, and, uh, look at what we're doing, and see if it lines up, maybe it does. Uh, and, uh, if it doesn't, is this at least an opportunity to perhaps, uh, shift uh, some of what is happening in that office? And that might mean that, um, responsibilities that are in the office currently now might be better done elsewhere. I'm not sure, I don't know. All I know is we have an opportunity right now. The other thing is, I, I really question the, um, the, what we're asking for job requirements, um, and, a- and then the title. Um, we are, if you go to the high end of this position, as it's written right now, it's almost sixty thousand. And for almost sixty thousand, we're asking only for someone with two years' office experience and an associate's degree? I, I think that we could get a, um, a, a higher caliber candidate, um, someone with certainly a bachelor's degree or higher, um, who could offer uh, much more strategic support for both the town manager and for the board of selectmen. The select board, jeez, I, I wanna slap myself with that.
Please don't, it's against our conduct policy.
Jeez, so, um, I, 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 I wonder about that, you know, um, for sixty thousand dollars? Um, that's, that's a, that's really amazing. I don't, so to me, it feels like we can, we can ask for more. Either that, or we could relook at that salary, but honestly, um, I wanna see what other towns are doing.
Do you think the salary is high for the job description as of this right now?
I think we could expect more for that salary than, uh, an associate's degree and two years' office experience.
So can you tell me what it would look like, or what you would envision it would look like if a communications role was brought into that position, like, what, what would this person be doing?
So,
Do we wanna get into the nitty-gritty of that right now?
So, I'm not sure, I mean, I have always sort of felt we, we did hire a communications person, and she's working nineteen hours a week.
Yes.
Um, I don't personally feel like that's enough, and that was grant-funded, right? So, I mean, originally, so it was like the idea of like, can we like, start to self, like, fund this? See if it's working, figure out the mechanics of it, and whether or not it fits in alignment, and if it's doing anything to help communicate with the residents. Um, so, I don't know, I mean, so, the, the idea was, you know, like, we have a website nobody was in charge of, right? Like, now we have a, I mean, so like, when, when we had these conversations a couple of years ago, things looked a lot different. We didn't have a communications committee, we didn't have a communications manager. So like, as we start to like, add in some of these additional roles, and I just feel, mm, like, comprehensively, there's three roles now, plus Steve and Fannerty, and like, do they all, are, are, is there any redundancies? And I know you had asked for the executive secretary, and I think the annual report is still on there, but I think Kate ended up doing the annual report. I'm just not sure, like, I just feel like it's an opportunity, as you said, like, so look at all three of, without the person, without the people, right? Just like the job function.
Exactly, like, job one, job two, job three.
Of these offices, do they make sense? And, you know, like, we're bringing in automation, and we're doing things like, you know, I just got today Civic Plus sent out a whole thing about like, agenda management, you know, like, you know, how can we make this cumbersome paper thing like, easier, right? Like, and is there like, a software that we can invest in that will like, take some of the burden away from hands-on manual labor? I don't know, right, like, I don't know either, but I feel like it's an opportunity to like, look at it, you know, maybe, you know, um, the executive secretary could have some more, um, you know, like, investment in her skillset, and, you know, um, have more responsibilities so she can advance her own personal career, I mean, other, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm also thinking that, yeah, I've, well, so two things, so I'm, I'm not so sure it's forty hours a week either, so, um,
Yeah.
The, so, but I do think, um, you know, communications is an important piece of it. But I also think that it's an opportunity where, that like, this position, um, if, uh, could be, uh, if they do an incredible job, you know, maybe this is someone that, um, could advance, you know, in, in, uh, you know, within Fannerty House, you know?
Right.
Um, we've talked about, uh, having a finance director, we've talked about, um, Steve had mentioned, um, a, um, an assistant town manager. Um, this is not that position, um, but this could be, um, the, uh, the leadership beginnings of ha- of having someone who is in a much more, um, senior position to help Steve and to help us, quite frankly. So, I just feel like we need to pause on this, no hiring, no interviews. We have to, um, take the time to look at what the possibilities are that, uh, for this position, within the context, as Jen has said, um, of no personalities, um, at, at least the two positions that are, are current, but I do agree with Jen that the communication piece at least should be looked at. I don't know how other towns are, uh, how, what their configurations are, and what I'm hoping for from you, Joanne, is to, um, to get a, um, a mix. I'm not looking for Palmer does the same thing, if Palmer does the same thing. It's what are some creative configurations, given that we have, um, a set amount of money, um, a lot of work that needs to be done? What are some, what are some, uh, models that we can look at?
I'd like to hear from Steve in terms of what he thinks about that, number one, but also, um, I mean, do you feel like the two positions are at max capacity?
As far as workload?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, you know, yeah, I do have a few concerns, um, you know, one is, we have two, well, we have two full-time staff working forty hours a week, keeping up with the workload. We also have a nineteen-hour communications manager that arguably could be thirty, thirty-five, or maybe even forty hours a week.
Mm.
Um, so if we have one position open in these forty hours, with the anticipation of some technology advances like AI, and maybe some software for managing agendas, there could be some room. But I don't think there's gonna be nineteen hours coming out of that, that technology. So in the meantime, there's a whole list of essential functions in the job description that need to get done. Um, so without this person, we're not gonna be able to do that. At the same time, if I'm gonna be in, At the same time, if I'm gonna be in, and somebody's on vacation, that means we would have to close the office. So we won't have, you know, access for the public to be in the office. And that's a little bit concerning, but if it's temporary, then we can tolerate that. Long term, it's it's probably not as tolerable. So we need to have some sort of an expectation of when this process would be completed.
I I don't want the closure of the office to be the reason why we aren't thoughtful about this.
I didn't say it would be.
Okay.
I just said temporarily, I think it's tolerable.
Yeah.
One point that I would be very cautious of is that, and I fully support Joanne looking at other communities, not every community has a town manager government structure. And I think if we limited ourselves to just the select board's office, we are only gonna see a very small portion of that picture. Because every community has a little bit different of a structure. And it might be very hard to find comparisons that are equal to what Belcher Town's structure looks like. You may have to go through the entire town hall to be able to figure out where all of these different functions are are placed. And I don't know if we have the time to do that, or or the the resources to do that. That could be a a big problem for us. And it would really provide results that may not be ideal.
Well, we haven't, we we don't know. And the and the other piece is, I know you have talked about having someone that is more senior to support you. And, you know, I don't disagree that having a more senior person i- i- is a bad idea, right? So I, we only have a set amount of money. We wanna make sure that we're diversifying decision-making, so you are not making decisions for every little thing. And so it may mean that based on Joanne's recommendations, that we have to look at some other configurations at the town hall, maybe. I'm not saying we upend the whole thing, but I do think just exploring it is, at least, we we should at least do that.
Oh, I think we need to take a harder look at it, I I agree. I'm just trying to question what I see. I work in this office every day, so I'm seeing things.
Right, and we aren't, and I appreciate that.
So the the DLS report emailed everybody, that just came out this year, January of twenty-five, did not recommend any changes to the office staff, it actually recommended to an additional position to be that decision-maker, to be an assistant town manager, finance director. And as part of that, communications and grant writing would be under or in that position. I don't think it'd be practical to have a director of finance, assistant town manager, grant writer, and communications manager. When all in one position, when we already know that our communications position could be forty hours standalone.
I don't think it's forty hours.
Then maybe thirty, you know, certainly more than nineteen.
Yeah.
So maybe there's some discussion with that as well.
Yeah.
My point is, I think there's a lot of work to do. It's greater than this one position, and what I can tell you is this one position is working forty hours a week, serving the public, selling stump stickers, answering the phone, licensing, all the foot traffic that comes in, directing people to the right place. Somebody still needs to be doing that, no matter what we do in that office, somebody has to be there to handle those functions. And that's my concern, that we, I think it's a great idea to try to create a position to have more authority to be assisting me in the other departments. But we can't forego the work that's currently being done to get there. We have to be able to create a new position at some point in the future.
Maybe, or, I, you know, I worked in the nonprofit world, so, you know, I'd be vice president, and I still had to clean the floor if it needed to be done, right? So I'm not saying that that's what we're asking for here. But I do think ha- uh, having a a an individual who has more experience and a higher degree, and is given the opportunity to to make more decisions and be a part of the larger process is possible. And, you know, there aren't a lot of municipal jobs, and there are people who want to move up the ladder. The way it's structured right now, there's no, there's no movement, you're in there, that's where you're gonna be. So I feel like you can do more with this.
I I think the next step above this position is the executive assistant. So there is a a path forward.
Oh, I'm talking more management.
Right, there's not, there's not a step above the executive assistant, and that's what I was saying. We probably need to create a position between myself and the executive assistant.
Right.
This position is created to be more clerical and and do more of those things. I did wanna address there, there, yes, there was some overlap with the annual town report. And those are things that we're we're still working out, and that's why anytime we have a vacancy, we start looking at the job descriptions and we take things out, we put things in. If we start adding significant changes like decision-making ability to this position, this position's a grade five. Most decision-making positions are higher grades, and now we're talking about additional money. All of these positions were classified based on a standardized system.
So someone with an associate's degree and two years' experience can make sixty thousand dollars? That's great. I just think we could, we can ask for more.
Most of these positions were classified before the personnel board was disbanded. But they use the same grading criteria that Joanne and most professional professionals in the HR world use for municipal employees. So I know it sounds high, but it it's it's based on a standardized system. Joanne's been reaching out to some of our peer communities. The DLS has a list of peer communities that they feel in trying to get some additional compensation information, just so we know if we're in that ballpark. That's not available yet, but we're working on it.
Well, I mean, is it okay if Joanne does go and look at what other configurations are out there? And there are a lot of towns that have town managers, so we can look at town managers. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I don't know if, I mean, to me, I think sixty thousand dollars, that's not a lot of money, but I don't really know. Cause I'm thinking, well, could we maybe go the other direction and pay the position less and throw that extra money at adding hours to our communications manager? I don't know.
Well, yeah, uh, but there is, this, the budget for the staffing does have some flexibility in it. The issue that I would see is not not the hourly wage. Once an employee steps above nineteen hours, they become benefiting.
Benefiting, yeah. Oh, okay, okay.
Now we're adding thirty percent to the position.
And and the communications position is rated higher than the administrative secretary position.
I believe that's a great, it's a great ten, right?
It already is, yeah. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, not to belabor this, but um, just, I've had a couple of restructures in my professional world, and I'm going through one right now. And I know, I'm sure you've already got this to some extent, but it's always an opportunity too to look and see, are there outdated responsibilities within the job that can be removed? I see like creating DVDs, do we still get DVD requests?
Oh, I didn't realize that was still.
I took that.
Oh, there's two, there's one from two thousand thirteen.
Oh, I thought two thousand fifteen was the most.
Yeah, look at the update.
Glad y'all caught that, cause I felt old.
We don't look at each.
That's good, no, but then the other thought, so knowing now that I'm looking at a ten-year-old document, but are there other responsibilities that currently maybe have job creeped into this person's role that could be remanded back to other departments? Are there things that maybe it is, it is payroll, no longer a function for this person? Or are there, are stump stickers appropriate for this office? Is there any space that can be freed up where then you could give them other responsibilities that will serve you specifically, Steve, and then the select board?
Yeah, we can look at all of that.
And and I'll say, just personally, the the associate's degree doesn't bother me at all. I actually think it's really important to have access opportunities for people to then be able to go on and get more education. I think that's an equitable way to be looking at work, but then maybe you pay them a little less, and as they then increase their education, they can step up.
Um, I've seen other structures in a town manager form of government where you, instead of a, an assistant town manager, you might have a chief of staff who kinda oversees and kinda takes on some of the duties that that the town manager would do. So that could be an option that we could look at. Um, obviously, the assistant town manager. Um, but I was wondering, what kind of things are you all looking for from this position? Is there anything like that you have in your mind? Like, I know Jen really was focused on the communication piece, is there something else that you're looking for that's not being met? That that we can think about adding or exploring?
Yeah, I'd like to see them here for the meetings, I think it'd be easier for their job, like present at this meeting, taking notes. Instead of like rewatching videos, like let them be here, so they could like brighten the knowledge, like adjust their day, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
I know the planning board, they're.
A lot of other committees have that.
But they have, their staff is here for a planning board, like town, like Doug doesn't take notes, Jackie does, right? She's here.
I mean, what what I do during the meetings, I I record the votes. Because if there's ever an audio problem, I wanna make sure we have the votes. The staff watches the meeting, the video of the meeting, and prepares the minutes from that. If we bring them here, they don't have a a an ability to hit pause. So if they miss something, they still have to go back and watch the video. And we also have to compensate our employees for a minimum of three hours, I believe it applies to everybody, right? For callbacks and scheduling, yeah.
Callback, if, yes, or we could, we could flex the schedule.
Yeah, but it's a, it's typically.
Couldn't that be built into their job description?
To work an hour, if it's an hour meeting.
No, to, that they attend the select board meeting.
We could, but.
And it wouldn't necessitate additional hours, it'd be an expectation, that's what I mean by having someone who's a little more
No, no, no. What you're saying is correct, but what I'm saying is, we have a minimum of three hours of pay for hourly employees.
Yeah.
So somebody's not gonna drive here from Granby for a twenty-minute meeting, or an hour meeting, drive home.
I'm talking at these meetings.
Correct, we would have to pay them for three hours. So if it's an hour meeting, they get three hours' pay, so it's a three-hour flex, which means I lose three hours of office time. So that puts a big hole in our schedule. I I like the idea of, I would like to have somebody here, but I also like the idea of having them be able to hit pause and answer somebody at the front desk, or answer the phone. Because if they're here for three hours, they're not in the office doing that. So that's why nobody is here. Some offices don't have the foot traffic that we have, and maybe it's more convenient for them. But we we will look at it, I'm just telling you, the reason why we do it the way we do it is because hitting pause is a very important ability to keep an office open.
I'm just curious, how does Jackie, Jackie comes to her planning board?
She must flex her days, she must have a shortened day or come in late, something.
Yeah, so, that, and that's my point, there's a gap in the office at some some point.
Yeah, cause she covers both planning and inspection, right?
I mean, exactly, right, right. So she's at a meeting, she's not getting overtime, she's some, there's a hole in that, in many schedules, yeah, yeah.
Right. Upstairs.
Right, in the office.
And that goes back to having good customer service and making sure the door is open during regular business hours. So if there's a way we can do that and it works, I would be happy to do it. But I wanna make sure that our core values, having customer service, having somebody to answer the phones, is being that. That that's the first priority, the second priority would be to have somebody here. Because we have the the recordings, so it is, it is convenient in that sense. And I think in the future, one of the things that we haven't really addressed as a group yet, that we're gonna be talking about.
But can I just finish, Joanne, ask a question, I just wanna get back to that.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, what what our expectations are from, from, you were asking what our expectation, what's missing?
Right, were there things that you were looking to to, you know, be covered?
Right. Yeah. And so it's sort of like you don't know what you don't know. So understanding how other towns support their select board, especially, I mean, John's brand new. So, you know, and, you know, so understanding how other communities are supported would be very helpful. Because honestly, I don't know what's okay to ask for and what is, you know, not, you know, normal. So understanding how other towns use that particular function would be great.
So what I was gonna say is, with the meeting minutes, I think in the next year or two years, we're gonna see the introduction of AI with a lot of different things. And that would also negate the reason, the need to have somebody sitting in this room, because AI would generate meeting minutes, draft meeting minutes right from recordings.
You still need to have somebody though, I mean, I, you know, I use AI, you still have to review it.
Correct.
Yeah, we're doing, during any Belcher towns, doing our AI, right? To generate our.
I don't know what that thing is, but it hijacks all of my meetings.
Yeah.
I don't like it at all.
There's some hurdles we need to get through, which we'll be talking about, one is developing a a policy for use. Another one's going to be, um, what platforms we use, how they're used, what access to our services they have. So these are all things we're gonna be working out over the next year or so.
Excellent.
But so I do think that there's some changes coming, I just don't know if we're ready yet to start implementing them, so, but we'll we'll get to that.
Can I have one last question? How long can you get by without this position being filled after June twenty-seventh, before it all starts to implode over there?
I wanted it filled, like, once out.
I would think you'd want it filled before that for cr- for training.
I did. You know, the problem is, we have vacations scheduled, we have meetings scheduled, and there's only gonna be two people in the office, and as soon as one leaves, the other person can't take lunch. So that's.
Well, they can take a lunch, but they're gonna have to close the office. You know, I mean, we don't expect people to work through lunch.
Well, no, I I wouldn't expect that, we're open eight to five.
I mean, I know we wanna have good customer service, but I go to CVS and they're on lunch break at the pharmacy, and I have to wait, like, I just like, there's nothing else you can do, so we have to, I don't know.
Exactly. Exactly. That's right. Yeah.
Well, we, our office is open eight to five.
Yeah.
The two positions currently rotate.
Right.
The late afternoon, plus we all rotate lunch times. So with one position, it it is going to be a big impact.
Yeah.
I'm willing to push through that, but there's also gonna be some vacations coming up, and it's gonna make it pretty difficult, so.
Can we get like temp, just to like be in the office, to answer the phone, like not to do anything, but just to have a body in there so that you guys can take breaks and whatnot?
I was thinking the same thing.
We can, we can see how long the the evaluation takes. See what Joanne takes for time.
Well, I mean, to your point, Steve, if you need somebody in there now, why not have a temp go in? So there isn't this pressure that we have five minutes to come up with this, I mean, it's gonna take Joanne some time, it's gonna take us some time. And there's no reason why this should make you pull out your hair, so.
That's why I keep it short.
Can we reach out to Pathfinder, they're gonna ask if there's any students for the co-op or anything? Cause they have programs like computer aids and stuff over there, just to, I mean, there's always high school kids, it'd be a great opportunity for them.
And you show in the summer.
Summertime, I'm just trying to, probably hire two Pathfinder kids, just for a short pay scale, never.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that a good idea? Do you like that?
I'm not sure if it's sensitive information.
Well, having somebody in the office would be a great idea.
Yeah, well, I mean, I don't know if you use temp services ever, or or if you call.
Haven't used any temp services while I've been here.
Okay.
But we can look into that.
Or Pathfinder, that's a great idea.
I'm just throwing out there as an idea, co-op soon or something, even in the future, we could probably use them for co-op.
Yeah.
I know there's sensitivity with some issues, so, but we'd have to.
I mean, there's all sorts of questions going through me, I don't know if Joanne can answer those.
Okay, um, just to the interest of time, does anybody have any other burning desires for this?
For this, no.
Okay.
I have one more, do you have like a idea of a date we want this accomplished by, I guess, like, what are we looking at for a timeline, so we can kinda get this?
Well, Joanne, when do you think you can have?
Cause we gotta help Steve out too, we can't just let this trip, so I'm just trying to get a timeline, like, let's talk about this.
I know.
It's open enrollment season.
It sure is, I'm, well, schools are closing, schools are starting, we're preparing for, um. I have to consider this
Yeah, do you wanna, you wanna, do you wanna
This needs like for, we don't wanna have a breaking coverage, um, and, I mean, you're gonna wanna thorough analysis.
Right. I think you're gonna have to look at a temp, um, or um, or using somebody from Pathfinder, just, we just need the time to do this right.
Yep.
So can you think about it and then uh maybe let Steve know what the timeline is and so he can um forward that to us, is that okay with you?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, I just don't wanna sit on it for months, that's all.
I don't know.
Nobody wants to sit on it for months.
I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, um, and I'm hoping we can put you on the agenda for the, you know, the next time we meet.
Okay.
Um, but I'm not saying that, you're going to let us know, no pressure, so you let us know which way you can do it, okay?
No pressure.
No pressure.
All right, um, okay, moving on?
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay, ratified appointment of assistant treasurer-collector?
No, no, he said we're not taking any.
We're not doing that.
Yeah.
No, we're not doing that, okay, so now town manager's report.
Good, so I endorsed uh warrants as usual, um, I did attend the uh the gathering to witness the uh final counting of the ballots for the overhead question, well, the election in general, but the overhead was for good reason. I do wanna say that there is a recount that's going to take place, it has been requested, we are, that has been planned for July.
July.
July, yeah. Um, I did have a meeting, uh, Joanne was involved in this one, glad she's still here, uh, as part of our ongoing efforts to look for inefficiencies and correct them, uh, we did have a a meeting with our treasurer-collector's office as well as the stormwater manager about streamlining um billing practices, and we were able to um eliminate some duplication of workout during that, so it felt very good.
Oh, that's great.
Um, so, you know, it was something that our treasurer-collector picked up on and our uh conservation office was eager to to help solve, so, um, we had good cooperation with everybody. Um, I did attend the first um strategy and planning um meeting with the school superintendent, we had another meeting this week, Wednesday, at five thirty.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just to talk about uh our goals and objectives collectively and what we expect um going forward.
How did that go?
It was good, it was a good meeting, um, and I think, um, we're off to a good start.
Did anything come out of it?
Uh, well, a schedule for future meetings, um, some topics for discussions.
Okay.
We didn't make any any uh decisions or anything to that effect, this is just a group of people getting together to build relationships and um work through, you know, different different topics.
Okay.
Okay.
We did get them to commit to meetings through the summer, mhm.
Oh, okay, great.
Yeah.
I felt like that was a good conversation.
Yeah, absolutely, um, and I think they were eager to do that, so, um, I did attend a series of finance committee meetings leading up to town meeting.
That's that's fantastic, that's great.
Uh, I attended an EDIC meeting, um, I did a lot of work with the office on the town meeting of art and articles, um I've been meeting with the HR director over employee issues, we meet weekly, if not sometimes daily, um, I attended a Memorial Day event, um, that was a very well-attended event, it was a good day. I attended a Sports Aiden pre-bid meeting, um, we have a bid opening on the ninth, um, we may extend that, there's been some questions that have come up, but if we do, it'll be a week or so. Um, I met with most of you, if not all of you, um, ahead of the town meeting to talk about various issues, and, um, I think town meeting went very well. Obviously, I attended a town meeting, it's not on here because, uh, this was printed before town meeting, but I was here, I was also at the Pride event, um over the weekend, and I just wanna say that, um, Officer DePande, Vinnie, the DEI committee, did a fabulous job, incredible, um, we had
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
at least a hundred people in the at at the flag raising, we did a short parade around the condom, back onto the the green.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
I believe there was sixty plus vendors set up, we had a a band made up of some some of our local youth.
Eighth graders.
Eighth graders that I listened to for quite a while before I realized they were eighth graders, and I took a, you know, a double take. Um, I met a lot of various um crafters and and small business owners walking around, um and I I've always realized that we have a lot of talent in Belcher Town, and I I I met, um, one of our employees and his partner, and his partner was selling children's books that he wrote himself, and I realized right then and there, I've always said this, it's kind of a joke, but when I saw this, I realized it's true, if you can't find it in Belcher Town, you don't need it, that is so true, I mean, there's just so many different things going on, so I I really hope that, um, you know, as we approach the holidays, people remember to really try to reach out to these people and and find these vendors.
Mm.
I hope we can get a vendor list together someday, just so people can can, you know, aid with your research, but we had Martin's bees, um, Martin's candles there.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, just so many different things, um, it was a good event. Um, I'll move on to my updates next, uh, EDIC land transfer, we did have a zone change question at the town meeting that passed for that small parcel that um, EDIC needs to complete the parcel D, um, design for the um, eventual business part. The six and eight Berkshire buildings, we have a one-stop grant application going in on the fourth for infrastructure.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I have no update on the pollinator garden, I need to circle back on that. The town hall elevator is the one, well, depending the delivery of one more component, um, job description reviews is ongoing, the human services study is ongoing. The financial organizational review is complete, um, I sent that paperwork out to everybody today, I would, if the board so wishes, I would like to get it on a future agenda to discuss.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I'll work with the the new chair to figure out when that's appropriate. Um, surplus property, the buildings and grounds committee is reviewing the hundred and ninety-one properties that we currently have, um, I know it's a slow process, but there's a long list. In our meeting, their meeting on the seventeenth, I am going to try to be there to uh see how that progress is going.
Mm.
The FY twenty-six budget, um, again, town meeting approved all of our budgetary items, as well as about a million dollars in capital. Um, I'd like to remind the board that I act as the chief procurement officer, and a million dollars in capital is going to be taxing, I'm gonna need some time to to work with our department heads on that. Um the next meeting, um, we're gonna be discussing liaison duties, so I'll I'll let you talk about that a little bit more.
Yes.
Joanne will be here to talk about our core disori policies, that's criminal and and um sexual um background checks for offenders, um
Do those need to be da- updated annually? We also have to be core and soried as well, I believe.
Yeah, the core disories have to be done annually on targeted employees with the policy every three years, yeah.
Agreed, okay.
Um, some some departments require it annually.
Okay.
Um, depending on the the group that they work with. Um, we also are going to be setting a date for those objectives, um, but before we talk about that, I just want to call the board's attention to the passing of Linda Baron um, as part of my report, Linda was a select board member from nineteen eighty-eight to two thousand and six. Her portrait hangs in the back of this room, if nobody has ever seen this, she passed away Sunday morning.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know how old she was, uh, I do know that Beers and Story would be handling the arrangements, eighteen years as a select board member is quite an accomplishment.
Wow.
And, uh, you know, I worked with Linda, and those of us who worked with Linda will remember her for a few things, uh, one, and it's reported, I don't know if there's any way to ever verify this, but it's been reported that she's only missed three select board meetings in eighteen years.
Wow, that's incredible.
Um, I can tell you that if the Red Sox were playing, we'd have very quick meetings. She had a a love of chocolate bars, um, she was always trying to try something different, um, when I first started using emails, this is how long I've been with the town, we didn't have email when I started, but when we first started emails, I got an email from her one day that said, have you tried this new M and M bar or something, right? I didn't know what spam was at that time, but I thought it was a fake email, until I saw her and she said, did you try it? But maybe what we probably would most remember her for is her red pen, um, I think in in some ways Nicole has taken that seat, she's always finding those grammar mistakes and spelling mistakes.
Mm-hmm.
So we didn't have a lot of fancy uh computers and emails and scanners, so we always got our paperwork back with red ink on it.
Mm.
And, uh, you you always know Linda read it because it was filled with red ink, so, um, you know, I'm certainly going to miss her, I I miss her presence on the board, and she was a great select board member, and, uh, I'm sure the town's going to, uh, remember her fondly, so.
Mm.
And, um, do we know anything about the funeral arrangements?
Not yet, um, I I didn't have time to look today, but I do know Beers and Stories look, you know, they're gonna be working on it, so I'll I'll keep the board apprised. So getting back to, um, the business, goals and objectives is coming up, um we can either plan that for an evening, um, an off night for a meeting, or a Saturday evening, but I think we should probably have that as a separate standalone agenda item.
Absolutely.
So we can spend as much time as we need.
I think we're gonna do a a queue up to the goals and objectives, so that we are all familiar with it.
Mm-hmm.
We can do that at, um, at at our regularly scheduled meeting, and then at that time, um, come up with when is most convenient for everyone to, um, to meet. Um, uh, I know there's been talk about, um, uh, a Saturday, um, Sunday afternoon also has been for our, um
Tough.
or uh another evening, so.
Another evening.
Yes, a good evening.
All right, okay, all right, so, but we don't have to do that tonight, so, um
So moved.
So I'll put goals and objectives update on for the next meeting if we can.
Uh, yeah.
And then we can talk about adding to it another, we'll have a, so you're just not gonna queue up?
Yeah, let, it's just to familiarize the the board, especially for new folks on the board, um, and just to get us in that mindset, and then we can come up with a date when we can meet. Okay, um, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Um, do any anybody wanna review the weekly mail?
I'm curious about this Tibetan.
Mm.
The Tibetan one?
The request on the
I asked Steve if that was, um, someone in town, if it was a resident in town, he didn't think it was.
Even if it's not, I'm intrigued. I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts about it, but I'm, I think it's like a one-day ask to put up this, um
Seems like it's a mix of, uh, church and state, I wasn't into it.
But Is it?
Well, it's proclamation of the Dalai Lama.
The Dalai Lama?
Uh, what about the Golden Cane, did you guys talk about that already, or?
No.
No, thank you for bringing that up.
That was in the mail, do we have a
Well, wait, one thing at a time, one thing at a time, so.
So
Janice brought up the Dalai Lama.
I mean, I I didn't, I didn't like examine it, I just found it intriguing that they were asking for it, I didn't, I mean, I've been to, um, the Peace Pagoda many times, I don't know. Um, I I looked at it more as like not really a religious thing, but more about the human rights, um, component piece of it, um, but, you know, whatever, I'm only one person, so, I don't know if we wanna entertain it any further or not, or
Does anybody wanna entertain it any further?
No. I think so.
John?
Done good.
No.
You can.
Uh, if you if you wanna do anything, if you maybe give it to the task board.
It's funny.
Yeah, I feel like
Yeah, I mean, maybe they would like to make a recommendation to us.
So there's that.
Can we do that? When do they meet, before July, whatever the state is that they're
Um, Vinnie is the chair, you can always ask.
Okay.
I'll forward it to Vinnie, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just
Um, any other?
The Golden Cane.
Yes, the Golden Cane, Steve?
So we do have a policy, um, on how the Golden Cane is is awarded. We used to actually have a replica of the original Golden Cane that we would
Mm-hmm.
present to the oldest resident of Belcher Town, um, that became a problem because we very rarely got them back.
They're gonna
So now the plan is, when we determine who the oldest resident of Belcher Town is, we will give them a certificate, do a photo op with the real cane, and memorialize that in the town hall. The policy sets specific standards for tenure in Belcher Town, you can't move to an assisted living facility, you become the new oldest person, so we set a timeframe, we set some different parameters on that, so when these requests come in, we review them and then we, um, make a recommendation, so we need to look at this a little bit closer and how it fits with the policy.
Mm-hmm.
And at some point, we should probably put an ad in the paper and ask people, um, to submit their name or or nominations, so it's something we can do, so.
Mm-hmm.
I don't wanna press it too much, but I think last time we talked about it's been a couple of months, so can we try to do that soon?
Mm-hmm. So I can look at it.
Well, I'd like to consider putting on the agenda, maybe not right now, but, um, having a discussion with the the board about, um, people who turn a hundred um, here, uh, in town, and, you know, how we might recognize them as a town.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, um uh, I I I also wanna talk more about the Golden Cane because we don't have a nursing home in this community, and so
That's
people are forced, if they, through no fault of their own, if they cannot be taken care of here, to go, um, to a nursing home, and so I
Mm.
I wonder how fair that is, or at least to talk about it, that's also a plug for a nursing home in Belcher Town.
In terms of they still, when they turn a hundred, if they've moved outside of town, you still wanna acknowledge them.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, um, but at but at any rate, um, maybe at a, not now, but let's let's keep that
Sure.
So I do, you want the policy back in front of the board?
Yeah, but not right now, I know we have a lot that we need to get accomplished, but I I do, and I also wanna talk to the, um, to, um the senior center and the council on aging, and just get their recommendations as well, you know, so.
Also, um, yeah, number nine, so the Dwight Day press release, um, so Dwight Day is happening again this year on June twenty-first, I just wanna also point out
Yes.
that this event at the Hill was held last year was extremely, um, informative, there was lots of historical talks,
Mm-hmm.
and, um, it caught the attention of the Scarborough Mini Festival, which is why there was an art installation, uh, that happened last evening, um, that they received a BCC grant for, and their whole theme was based on Panzi Park and Dwight Station, and um, I just wanna bring to light and shine a light on the fact that there was this historic event that happened with the BCC grant, and was caught the attention and further made this beautiful art exhibit that was highlighted, where they also got some funding from our local cultural council, and I just love that marriage of historical and art, and it all happened here, and
This sounds like your report.
It just, it just, I can do my report after, but I'm just, like, I, it was, like, it brought so much joy
No, do, I mean, segue into it, segue into it, yeah.
to my, um, to my heart, you know, because it's the exact kind of cross, like, pollination, because the
Cross collaboration.
because the name of the exhibit was the, uh, Flowers of Innovation.
Cross pollination.
Yeah, um, and I just thought it was super cool, and they did a really amazing job, and if you haven't seen the pictures, um, I can find some and circulate them around, 'cause it was really, really, really a neat event. You want me to keep going?
Sure.
So that happened yesterday, I also went to Pride, and I also wanna echo that, um, yes, we have amazing people, the event was incredible, um, uh, you know, one of one of my friends who grew up here said, never in her thirty-seven years of being in Belcher Town, did she ever think that this would happen in town. Um, and that just br- you know, again, kudos to everyone that made, um, this happen and, um, made Belcher Town such a welcoming place, um, for folks, um, incredible, uh but more artisans are coming, because on Sunday is the opening of the farmer's market, uh, our Belcher Town farmer's market and our farmer and artisan market, um
Yeah.
and so that will be happening this Sunday. And so that will be happening this Sunday and our traveling quilt will be in attendance, which was also at Pride, um, and it's been at the library. So if you haven't seen that project, there, um, we have it for six weeks. We have it through the end of June twenty-first-ish, um, and that will be traveling all throughout town. Um, and that's an opportunity for folks to do some social weaving and do some connection, uh, community engagement. So that's another. It's also being, um, it is like a whole group of people, but the Creative Economy Committee like really embraced that whole, um, situation. All right, I'm gonna back, back up. Tomorrow at the library, do not miss this event. Scott Fisher, who is a highly sought-after master illustrator who lives in town and for the past ten years has made the Summer Reading program T-shirts for the library. He designs Magic the Gathering cards. He is well-known in the artistry community and he is going to be giving a talk and they're gonna have an exhibit on his, um, past ten years of, uh, Summer Reading logos that he has created for our logo.
What time is that?
It's six to eight.
Six to eight. I think the talk's at six in town hall. And I, and then are they going over to the library or they staying here?
Six to eight. I don't even know. I'm just so uber excited about this event. He doesn't go out in public and do events like this. And so this was a huge, um, it's huge for, um, all of us here at the library and for our community and for Scott and for us to celebrate him and his art. And I just think it's incredible. Um, what else, what else, what else? Uh, I weren't all this stuff. Oh, um, Saturday, the Greenway is having a walk of the trail. That was also in our mail. I'm sorry, I didn't highlight that. There's so many cool things happening this summer. I'm very excited. Um, but at ten AM, they're doing a walk of the next section of the Belcher Town Greenway. Um, I think it's from Maple Street to the Austin Field on George Hanum. So it's just, um, a way to highlight this section and what they're doing for that trail, uh, work. So if you're interested in learning more about that, that's at ten AM. Um, let's see. On the thirteenth is our trash gala to highlight the murals sta- the murals that are being painted on the transfer station. There's gonna be lots of events about that. So that's on the thirteenth, which is Friday evening from four to six. I somehow got roped into doing something, so definitely come and visit and check it out and do all the things. Um, and then the fourteenth is the Lafayette coming to Belcher Town.
Yes.
Fifteenth, right?
No, the fourteenth.
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 It's also John's birthday.
Yes.
Aw.
Well, that's excellent.
Um, but that's, all the things that are happening in the next, like, two weeks before our next meeting, so.
It's amazing. Amazing. Oh, that's great. Thank you, John. Whitney?
Sure, there's a lot of overlap in my report, so I won't repeat it just for time, but, um, I also wanted to share that I too attended the, um, the ballot counting, which was great just, just to see the clerk at work and, and doing all of their important work. Um, uh, Steve already mentioned that we are beginning to have these meetings again with a few of the school committee members and we're just trying to build rapport and also begin to work on all the promises that we've made of really reviewing the schools and, um, the town as well and that. So I think we're going very well. We have another meeting coming up this week.
That's great.
And, let's see, can I read my own handwriting? Um, oh, annual town meeting. I just wanted to say thank you to the board for, um, letting the, the Little Voters Lounge and the childcare go forward. It was a total success. It went very well. I had so many parents approach me and say how thankful they were to have that resource available and I couldn't believe how many volunteers in town actually said it was their first town meeting 'cause they have never been able to go with their kids. So that was really great and, um, thanks to the recreation department and, um, MJ especially for running that program. And then I also attended the Pride flag raising and, oh my gosh, what a difference a year makes. Last year was great. This year was incredible. There were so many people. It was just such a spectacular event. I heard the same thing Jen heard. People were approaching me saying, I never thought I'd see something like this in Belcher Town. And it was just, it was such a pleasure to see people feeling just at, at ease in their community. So I think that that is all I have for this week.
Okay. Nicole?
I didn't have as much fun. I did more serious stuff. Um, May twentieth, I attended the school committee meeting virtually. Um, on the twenty-first, we had our, um, joint town and school strategy and planning meeting, um, and I was also pretty happy with how it went. Um, I, I couldn't have asked for a better meeting. Um, that same night, I went to, to FinCom and then walked over to EDIC.
Triple header.
Um, May twenty-sixth, Memorial Day parade and ceremony. May twenty-eighth, uh, branding Belcher Town meeting and then of course, May thirty-first, annual town meeting. My first annual town meeting.
That's great.
John?
I had to run running. I mean, I think it was like a whirlwind of emotions going on since I got elected, so. Here I am on May twentieth right away. Uh, I attended the, the final ballot count. That was an intriguing process.
Mm-hmm.
Eye-opener of how much work Terry in her office does, so we should be commended and, uh, Steve for sure and let her know that. On the twenty-first, I did the FinCom meeting in person, then we went over to EDIC. That was another eye-opening experience for me on EDIC. Ended up, the, the best part I got of that is the smokestacks coming down and the power plant's coming down finally.
That's great.
I think they started.
Well, it was coming.
It was great.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they had to take it down brick by brick just so it's not, because of all the asbestos and stuff. So that's a huge ordeal.
Yeah, we're doing. Yeah. Yeah.
So it's not like just as simple as knocking it down, which I found, I thought it was quick to knock it down, but you can't, brick by brick.
Yeah.
Wow, my gosh.
It's a long process. Uh, twenty-second of May, I had some free time, so I introduced myself to a lot of the town employees around the town office, just to say name to a face, so. It was a good overwhelming. I still have a couple of departments to go to, but I wanna make sure I get out there and let the, the townspeople know I'm here, working for them. The twenty-sixth of May, I attended the Memorial Day ceremony too, but I went to South Cemetery with Senator Alvera and our representative state son, uh, Aaron Saunders
Mm-hmm.
and Charlie, which I don't know her real name.
Olivia.
She changed?
She changed. She got married.
She changed it.
So.
Roque?
Roque, yes, Roque.
Roque?
Yeah.
Roque?
So, I just wanna make sure. I, I wanted to get it corrected, but. Then I roped them both into coming to a baseball ceremony that night, so I got all of them there, baseball for the league and, and the community.
Oh, cool.
So, just wanna share that too, as well as the parade. Twenty-seventh, I attended the planning board meeting online.
Nice.
That was, they reorganized, which I'm really getting into this, so I'm diving right in, just, was good to see. Uh, everyone stayed in the same spot and reorganization. Uh, twenty-ninth of May, I attended the communication meeting. Let me tell you, that was probably the best, funnest meeting I ever went to. If you have not gone to it, the energy in that room and the passion those people have, I just wanna, even all the communities, but they have so much energy that the town people should be very proud. I didn't realize they did all the work on the, the town website and everything, so that's kudos to them. Like, we need to give them the credit they deserve. And they're talking about a new AI policy, so that's, hopefully that can come out for the town. Um, the thirtieth of May, I met Steve to kinda get caught up on select board duties, so that one overwhelmed. I think I took an hour and a half of his time and drank a lot of coffee. But, and then thirty-first of May, town meeting, which was a great time to, and to note again, there was the most people I think that ever showed up to town meeting at one time, so that's good for the town and good for democracy. I think that proved a lot of stuff. And here I am.
So the official count?
Wow.
Wow, yeah, it's official.
Well, that's the official count.
I got it from Terry today. One thousand one hundred and twenty-one registered voters in the county.
And that is the highest, that was, that's the highest ever for Belcher Town?
Registered voters.
Oh, yeah.
Well, as far as we know, um, I believe that that's.
Let's say highest ever.
This century.
How many registered voters do we have?
Twelve thousand something.
Uh, yeah, I don't, I'm not sure the exact number, but.
It's like one percent, isn't it?
That was still a, a very big crowd.
Thirty percent?
Yeah, it's all New York, so you're saying.
But I just wanna say, John, I mean, wow.
Yeah.
I'm diving in.
Your first, first one, you know?
Already.
You know, you're setting a high bar for yourself. Um, no, that's wonderful.
I'm just trying to get introduced, like, see where's that at and seeing where her at.
Yeah. That's wonderful. That's wonderful. Well, um, I, um, I have a, a couple things. First, um, I do think Terry and her staff did, uh, an incredible job, um, at town meeting and I'm wondering if we can, um, uh, send her a letter on behalf of the select board thanking her, um, for the work that she has done, um, that we appreciate it and her. It was a town meeting. I am so impressed with, um, with Belcher Town, how we all conducted ourselves. I'm impressed with, um, everyone who participated and, um, while, uh, there were different opinions in the room, everyone was respectful and, um, and cordial. I, I just, I mean, the only concern was about a barn, right? Um, and, and even that, um,
It was passionate.
just brought a smile. So, um, uh, I certainly attended town meeting. Um, uh, we can get something out to Terry? So, right, okay. Uh, I also went to Lucy Sincaida's one hundredth birthday. And, uh, Lucy, uh, I just wanna wish you a happy birthday again. Um, uh, she is a lovely lady and very, very pretty in pink. Uh, I attended the over, uh, override count. Uh, that's democracy in action. I certainly love that. I went to the Memorial Day event, um, and I also went to Pride. And what I wanna say about Pride is, um, Vinnie did a phenomenal job. The DEI task force did a phenomenal job. Uh, and so did the Belcher Town Police Department. Uh, it takes a village to get something like this up and running. And what is, uh, personally rewarding to me is, uh, four years ago, coming into this room and, uh, fearfully asking the select board if they would consider raising the flag. And going from that very humble beginning to seeing a, just an explosion of laughter, love, people relaxed, people having fun, dancing, eating, just enjoying one another, uh, with, with no, um, with no fear. Was, um, just a wonderful thing to witness. And it lets me know that this is no longer about one or two people who, uh, who came for an ask. This is something that is now the town's. This is a tradition of Belcher Town and, um, I can't, I can't tell you how good that feels. So, um, so, yeah, I did that. And then, um, I think that was it. So, great, good work, everybody. Uh, do we have any questions from the press? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Hi, Ms.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.